Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll stand for a prayer. Mr. Griffin? All by the invitation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the love of Jesus, the willingness to go to the cross. Or we thank you for Christmas that we just finished and we celebrated a baby and a manger. But I thank you the most that you didn't stay a baby. That you now live in my heart and washed away my sins. And give us wisdom to make these decisions today and teach us to have an open heart and an open ear to whatever might come before us, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Griffin, here. Councilmember Eubanks.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards, here. Councilmember Oliver, here. Council President Simmons.
Here.
Madam President, all six council members and attendants, and therefore a quorum is present.
Thank you. On the agenda, we did remove item Z to, on the consent agenda, item Z to the regular agenda, which will now become item B. We can get approval, please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Eubanks, second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor.
Six, zero, motion carries.
This time we'll have a message from Mayor Betterson.
I don't know much this evening, but I will say that obviously cold weather's here and we know by the end of the week we may have some white stuff out there. I know that Mr. Coontz over at our street department mentioned tonight, we've had several meetings about how we handle that. So if you have any issues, we hope you will stay safe out on the highways and byways. And obviously, EMA is your first opportunity to stay in touch with that. I don't hesitate to call our office if we can help you there. Second thing, one of the items on the agenda of mine is memorandum of understanding with the project help through the help center, which has been in operation a long, long time. That program is coming back to the help center after a couple of years and they're working carefully with community action on that program. Approximately $3,500 per month is donated through our citizens' utilities to go for utilities for those in need. It's a great program, it's been in operation a long time. So we certainly applaud them and what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from any department heads? Standing committees?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Today was a public safety meeting. Those present were Chief Anderton, Steve Eason, Mayor Betterson, Ashana Balch, Michelle Eubanks, Katrina Simmons, Bernie Delinsky, David Carson, and Bill Griffin. This meeting was to discuss the fire station before construction. The project had to be rebid in December. The new bid project came in below the past bid by $250,000. The new contractor, H and N Construction, will be from here in Florence. The bid came in at a total of $4,463,300. With other line items, which include architectural fees, the total cost will be close to $5 billion. These costs will be spread over a two-year budget period. The vote was three to zero to the Project Committee Finance Committee and then to the whole council. We met at 11:35 and dismissed at 12:10.
Thank you. Are there any other standing committee reports? At this time, we'll have business from the floor pertaining to the items on the consent agenda with a five-minute time limit and we'll start to my right. David.
Hello, my name is David Carson, I live in Florence. I guess during this section, I'm just gonna bring up the item to tear down, to approve, to tear down the old parking deck with the consent agenda. Mainly, I mean, I've had several issues with that. But some information, new information, at least to me, came to light that the architectural firm that did the original assessment that needs to be torn down is involved with the company. It's gonna, you know, they're gonna be the architects to help with the demolition of it. So essentially, the architectural firm, the person, people who said the parking deck has to come down is gonna make money from it coming down. And that's an obvious conflict of interest. I think there should be some kind of architectural firm, some type of firm, or some people who are not gonna make money from it coming down to give an honest opinion on the actual state of it. Because that's, I mean, why would they say, why would it say that it could stay up when they're making money if it comes down? That's just the information that's been shown to me. So yeah, I think that's an obvious conflict of interest. It's unfortunate that this information just came up recently. Some is, in Michael White, they found some information about that. So if that is true, definitely needs someone else to look at it. Because there's no reason for this company, LBYD, to say anything other than it needs to come down and they're making money from it coming down, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Members of the RSTI, and I'm gonna start a four-minute, 15-second timer right now. Okay. So really quick, first, on the parking deck, I would encourage everybody to go back and watch my speech from the last council meeting on December 17th. I posted just the clip of that on my Facebook and Instagram pages at RiversRSTIStar. So anybody that would like to watch that can. But my only question on that tonight would be, has it been inspected during the three weeks between December 17th and now? For the rest of my time, I wanna talk about a map that hopefully everybody caught up. You know, I tried to send it to every council member as well as the mayor, the city attorney, Mr. Musgrove, and our city clerk, Bob Leidy. And I had very little time to do this, I had very little time to do this. But I looked at that proposal, which y'all have displayed here in City Hall, and I said, okay, how can we increase, you know, the African-Americans in District One while keeping the proportions the same of the six districts? Because if y'all remember, I've talked about this at a previous council meeting, but back in 2022, I did a state map. And so this is my second time to do a map, first time to do it of the city. But this is what I came up with. So under my map, District One would add High Street, east of Railroad Avenue from Hermitage Drive, south to Avondale Street, and would gain Cherry Hill Home Street, Coy Johnson Way, and Carl T. Tyree Jr. Place from District Three. There'd be no change in District Two. District Three would gain the north side of Hermitage Drive from east of Royal Avenue, north to Leela Street, to the west side of Dooland Street from District Four. District Four would gain the east side of Cot Street Parkway, north to Gresham Road, east of Beeman Drive from District Six. And this would move the Deerfield Place and Seville Place Apartments into District Four. Then District Five would gain back the east side of Old Cloverdale Road to the west side of Moorewood Boulevard. Under that map, would lose to District One. And then District Five would lose the north side of Rash Road to Donnelly Lane, as well as the north side of Rash Road, north to Sugar Maple Drive, and east to the west side of Chisholm Road to District Six. And that also covers the changes to District Six. So basically, District Six would gain those areas that District Five lost. And the map that I created maintains the proportions, so they're within the required proportions. And my map roughly increases the African-Americans in District One by 3% based on the data I have. Now, the data I used was the general 2020 census data. And then, since I didn't have all the voter, you know, files that NACOG had, what I did to maintain the equal proportions is I literally counted houses and I looked up the number of apartments in the various apartment complexes when that was necessary. And so if y'all have anything y'all wanna ask me in the next couple of weeks about my map, hopefully y'all know how to reach out to me. But like I said, I'm not sure which map is better. You know, this map and that map have pros and cons. There's a lot I like about this map, too. Both maps, I like the fact that they maintain as many of the areas in their districts the same. Because, look, I think moving everybody would be bad because, look, we don't want every single voter of Florence to have to find a different polling place. That would just be confusing. And so I think we both have the similar goal of keeping everybody in the same polling places as possible. But I thought that, you know, you know, that I could see how, in the short amount of time I had, that if it would be possible to increase the African-Americans in District One, I did the best I could. And again, if y'all have any questions about my map, let me know. Thank y'all for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
I'm Michael White, 47-year-old, Chisholm Road, Florence, Alabama. You boys stole my thunder. River is a genius. We are lucky to have River. Y'all might wanna listen to River. You might wanted to have listened to River three weeks ago. He made an excellent speech at the end of the council meeting saying that, like Jackie Hendricks had proposed in this circle of trust meeting we had about the City Hall, have an independent engineering firm go over and look at City Hall. See what can be saved, see how bad it is. Let's, you know, get one not from Florence, get one from somewhere else that has no interest whatsoever in either tearing down the City Hall, rebuilding the City Hall, or doing something with it. River made the proposal at the last meeting, at the very end. Why not get an independent engineering firm to go look at the parking deck and see if any part of it could be saved? David Carson and I walked the entire deck. It was very cold and windy on that Sunday afternoon. The bottom two floors are not that bad. All this stuff that I've heard about deteriorating concrete and the skies falling and all this stuff, it doesn't look that way. Now, the top two look pretty bad. They haven't been maintained. There probably should have been some enclosure put around them years ago. And then to add insult to injury, when LBYD did the report in 2018, the city council then, which, let me see, one, two, we're only three, just ignored it. Well, you know, it'll get fixed somehow or we'll just tear it down and spend taxpayer money to build another one, which is what happened. Okay. I did a little digging. I'm a file detective. I love to look stuff up and it's kinda what I do now that I'm retired. This is a hard copy of an email from LBYD Engineers. It is dated February 12, 2024. It is entitled "Proposal for Civil Engineering Services." It is to Lambert, Ezell, and Durham Architecture, 401 East College Street, Florence, Alabama. Attention, Jason Tucker. It is from LBYD Project, or, yeah, and it gave a project number concerning the parking deck demolition at Tennessee Street, Florence, Alabama, from somebody named Shelby Musgrove. I don't know, I've heard that last name before. Anyway, here's the transmittal of the email. LBYD Incorporated, please provide you with this proposal for civil engineering services. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this project. If you have any questions or comments concerning the scope of the services or any other items, please do not hesitate to contact us. If you find the proposal acceptable, please sign and return a copy for our records. In lieu of a signed proposal, notice to receive or payment for services constitutes acceptance of this proposal. Any other terms must be presented for our consideration prior to the start of the work. This proposal has been prepared with the express understanding that the selection of our firm to propose these services is based solely upon our qualifications and experience. And then they go on to do the rest. Has it ever been investigated whether LBYD has the contract
You have one minute every minute.
With Durham, yeah, I figured I would, with Durham and Ezell and Lambert, to make money off of that being torn down? And sure, they wrote a letter to Andy Betterson saying, yep, you better tear it down now 'cause they wanted to get on that gravy train. They had money to be made. I'll just leave my time alone, thank you very much.
Anyone else to my right?
Hello, I'm Donna Steele. I live in District Two. I did notice that this was, I wanna stick to the old map and it was an Agenda Seven item, so I don't know if we're there yet. Is it okay for me to proceed? Okay. I have a couple of questions. One is, who drew the new map? Were any consultants hired? Did you guys draw it?
Donna, we're not allowed to have conversation down long back with you from a Durham meeting. We can talk to you afterwards.
Oh, okay. But that would be information that I would expect would be shared freely.
You can get it freely.
Okay. I know a little bit about gerrymandering and I will say that when I first moved to the city four years ago, I looked at the map and I thought, wow, this is a really gerrymandered map. And I don't think that the proposed map addresses that. And I say that it's gerrymandered because it has two elements that really indicate a gerrymandered map. It's packed and it's cracked. And by that, I mean, look at District Two. Its shape is not contiguous to its own self. It goes this way and that. And just on the face of it, just to look at the color map without any detail, it appears that District One and District Two are very unrepresentative. I think that some things to look for in a good map are, first of all, transparency in the process. That will help ensure a good map. I also think that an independent body needs to create that map. The purpose of the map is not to guarantee incumbency, but it is to guarantee that all citizens are represented equally. Things to consider, which you guys did a great job of considering, equal population. But the contiguous portion of what makes a good map is not readily apparent as I look at that map. I do wonder if communities of interest were considered? If the map was drawn to be incumbent-lined? And I do wanna know if diversity was considered when this new map was proposed? I think a good way to start on a process like this, as major as it is, is to ask members of the public to participate in the process. And I'm new to this project, so I don't know if that was done. And maybe that's another question y'all can answer for me after the meeting. And I would also like to know if the consultant, assuming you did hire a consultant, if they were paid, or any of the citizens whose input you sought, if they were, you know, say, paid members of a commission or a committee to work on the redrawing of the map? So primarily, I don't wanna repeat myself, but I've made my points and I do just want to emphasize the fact that a transparent process is good for us all. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? In the middle?
Middle, I'm sorry.
Villarreal Simpson, 755 West Alabama Street, Florence. Leave everybody to know where I live by now. Thank you, Madam President, to the council. I'm looking at this to the regular agenda ordinance to approve new voting districts. I'm against this. I hadn't thought about it too much, other than from the other day. But as I was sitting there, I realized that there's a whole different reasoning behind this map. And a few people probably already covered what I was thinking about. Black population in District One has went from 52 to 40 if I'm correct. I think the reason why it was like it was, it still is, because of all the black representatives were able to sit in District One seat. But now we see in each district there's more white representatives that vote for white council members. But now we're going to see white representatives are now able to sit in District One seat because of the votes in public. And y'all, excuse me, I do not trust most white folks to vote for black folks, not in Alabama. You have to forgive me, if you say I'm racist, I might be. But I've lived for 73 years and I understand how people think in Alabama. This is not right. It's not right. Whoever... And I don't know how ignorant these folks was that drew this map, but they were pretty ignorant. And I don't know where they come from. Well, Alabama, probably. They surely come from some educated people that believe in civil rights and black representation, equal opportunity. They didn't, they didn't think about nothing like that. They just thought about, let's equalize population. But I know this is not right. We want, even though I'm in District Two, we want District One to have more people that are black able to choose another black council member. Even though Ms. Simmons is doing a great job and I, it'd be real hard to beat. But still, I do not trust most white people to vote for blacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Villarreal Simpson. Anyone else in the middle? Okay, Mr. Light, at this time, if you will go ahead and read the consent.
All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed each member of the Florence City Council for reading and study, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one most of the council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, an item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request.
Your motion.
Motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Griffin, all in favor.
Six, zero, motion carries. It's our human motion, eh, by Mr. Edwards. Motion carries, six, zero. Under the regular agenda, item A is an ordinance to approve new voting district lines for the upcoming municipal election to be held on August 26, 2025. Sponsored by Bob Leidy and Phil Musgrove.
Your motion for the immediate consideration, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Eubanks, second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor of the motion. Your motion with adoption.
Looking at, always right, I'm in the conspiracy.
Oppose.
Four votes to two, but we do not have unanimous consent, so it will be carried over to the next meeting. All right, item B is resolution to approve a contract with Tomlin Escavating Company Incorporated to provide labor equipment, materials, and incidentals necessary for the demolition of the municipal parking deck located at 116 West Tennessee Street and properly dispose of the debris for the city of... Properly dispose of the debris for the city. The amount not to exceed $774,260.85, sponsored by Mayor Betterson.
This was from the license, so do I hear a motion for the adoption?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor of the motion. Oppose.
Three votes for, three votes against, motion fails. That's all I have, Madam President.
General business, none. We have business from the public with a five-minute time limit, starting with my, to my right.
I knew you looked straight at me. Michael White, 47-year-old, Chisholm Road, Florence, Alabama. I probably got a little hot last time and I'm sorry about that. I tend to get a little carried away when I get to talking about politics. I love a little politics, as everybody here knows. Well, I certainly want to congratulate three of the representatives. You are true representatives of the citizens of Florence. I'm very disappointed Jackie Hendricks. Because Jackie was the one that I was championing. He had actually been the one that sat at the circle of trust meeting and said, you know, let's just hold up for a minute. Let's see what we can find out and see if we need to tear down the City Hall. I don't see what you got against the parking deck. But anyway, I don't see why we can't just at least have an engineer that's not gonna make money off of it being demolished, come over there and look at it. That is all anybody has ever said since day one. I don't believe Tomlin is that anxious to get it done for $770,000. They're not gonna go up that much more and it may not have to, we may not have to use Tomlin. Let's rebid it, we rebid the fire station, why can't we rebid that? I mean, you know, it's just, there's another way around it. Just holding a gun to somebody is not gonna work. You know, election's coming up, August 26, 2025, and people are looking at stuff like this. I haven't been, but if you declare, I know Jimmy has, Katrina has. There haven't been a few declare, I know Jimmy has, Katrina hasn't declared yet, I don't think. Mayor Betterson has, and Bill Griffin is going for mayor. But, you know, I'm not totally against every... Some people, I mean, you know, y'all have done some good things, but you've done some lousy things, too. A hundred million dollars in bond debt is ridiculous, and just keep adding to it every day. You know, it's... I bet people say, "Well, why don't you run?" Well, I'm not in the right church with the right people, you know, so I doubt very seriously that I'd be elected anywhere, but I may. You never know. I may, yeah. I think I'd be running against my good friend Blake there, so we might just do it. But anyway, I want to thank you three for at least putting the reins on this, and let's do this. Let's get an engineering group over there to inspect it and inspect this City Hall before we just demolish it and spend a bunch of monies more than... I mean, you know, the citizens of Florence are already... We're twenty percent below the poverty level. Twenty percent of our people live below the poverty level. We have an average hourly wage of under twenty dollars an hour. We pay nine point five percent retail sales tax, the highest in North Alabama. We pay more than Huntsville. I mean, you know, isn't enough enough? Anytime to start trying to save money instead of spending it like we're, you know, never have to worry about tomorrow? I could go through a whole list of things, but I'm sure Mr. Lighty is going to tell me my five minutes are up soon. Another thing, one thing I do want to mention, though, since they're tearing down part of the mall, is why hasn't somebody tried to work with whole property to get them to sell that or do something with it? Look what they did in Huntsville. They took the old university mall and redid the whole thing. We're helping Joel Anderson build West Village with tax rebates. We're helping Eugene Sack, a slumlord, redo downtowner Motor Inn. But yet, and they're millionaires, you know, but yet we're asking our citizens to pay nine point five percent in taxes, and we're giving these millionaires tax rebates for twenty years. And we're not... We didn't offer a thing to the whole property.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
Okay, that's all we needed. Anyway, I want to thank you three for voting no on this, and maybe your other three will come around. Have a good night.
Firstly, I would like to thank Councilman Griffin and Councilwoman Simmons for pushing the map discussion forward two weeks. I would like to invite everybody that is watching this meeting live on Facebook right now to, you know, review the current proposal that's on the table, if you haven't already, so you can know, like, what district you'll be in, so many new lines are passed. And since this proposal has not moved forward two weeks, during the next two weeks, I would like to invite all the council members to reach out to me if any of you want to discuss my map that, you know, I made. Again, both maps have pros and cons. So, I mean, I just wanted to give you all an alternative proposal that would increase African-American representation in District One. Again, my map will do that by about three percent. But I would like to invite every one of you to reach out to me. I'll be happy to discuss my proposal and answer any questions. I'd also be happy to discuss my proposal with Mr. Musgrove or Mr. Lighty. So, with that being said, for everybody watching, the public, I'll be... Over the next few days, I'll be posting my proposal for, you know, for view online on my Facebook and Instagram pages, Superstar X D Star, so just be looking for that. I would say I'll have that up probably on Friday, so just be looking for that. And with that, I yield my time. Thank y'all so much.
Hello, my name is David Carson, I live in Florence. I'll start out with something a little more... Start out with something lighthearted, at least. It's about this... I mean, no problem giving the Scholes Theater a little bit of cash, I mean, ten thousand's nothing compared to what we give other stuff. But I do want something every... Turn, you know, my text star was going in that. I would love to have the video footage of that ceremony that they had at the Scholes Theater when they unveiled the Florence logo. I believe that footage got buried. I would just love to see Andrew Behrman stand up there so proud of that logo. That would just be awesome. I would give anything for that. So Scholes Theater, please, if you got that footage somewhere, if you did destroy it, please send it to me. I will give you money for that footage. Okay, all jokes aside, unfortunately, comments are still banned from the livestream, the Facebook livestream here, cannot comment. Once upon a time, you could comment, but our mayor decided that he did not want comments during the livestream. It doesn't stop people from talking, but I think that it's very cowardly, and I'll keep bringing that up, that you should allow comments, you know. I think part of transparency is open discussion. If anybody wants to say anything negative or ridicule me, go right ahead. I actually have a backbone, and I can take it, you know, whatever, and I stand on principles and stuff like that. So I don't mind when people talk about me, you know. My other problem, when you're really shady and don't have a backbone, you really don't like comments, generally. But anyway, I didn't mean for that to add an omen to my tags, but it is what it is. I shouldn't ban comments. Some people want to talk smack, you know, whether it be on livestream or in person. I'll say stuff in person. All right, and let's get on to the part with the parking deck. I think it's good this got postponed. We'll see where this goes, but let's just look... I just want to get a general overhead view of this whole situation, because it's... There's a few elements that are interconnected here. It's not just the parking... The future of the parking lot is tied to the future of the City Hall. They're kind of the same master plan. What they want to do is they want to destroy this current City Hall, destroy the parking lot, and then use the parking lot as a staging area to build, to help build the new City Hall. That's already been pretty much decided, not voted on yet, but that's decided by the powers that be. I've done a tour of the parking deck, thanks to Bill Griffin. I've also done a tour of the City Hall. The City Hall, it's got a few leaks in the ceiling. Literally, it's got like a few leaks in the ceiling. There's just things that... They're called maintenance guys. Guys might want to check into that, like maintenance people, like there's plumbers, they actually know how to work with pipes and how to fix leaks and stuff like that. You don't have to just destroy something and build a whole other building whenever you can fix some leaks and maybe do some repairs on the roofs and stuff. You know, are there even maintenance people at that... I mean, do you guys even employ maintenance people? Do you take care of anything? You guys didn't do anything after the report back in, like, twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen about the parking deck needing these things that stay up? You guys didn't do nothing. So you build things, let it deteriorate and destroy it, build another one, because who cares? It's taxpayers. We're getting very much in debt. We're millions, hundreds of millions of dollars bond debt, it sounds like, you know, just a little... Are we going to be able to afford anything for the unseemable future from these projects? At the very end, what do we get? We get... We got a new parking deck that has less spaces than our current old parking deck, you know? And so, so at the very end, we're going to spend millions...
Yeah, one minute remaining.
If this whole plan comes together, we'll have... We'll still have one City Hall, maybe with a few leaks, and we'll have still one parking deck with fewer parking spaces and millions and millions and millions of dollars in debt. What have you achieved? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Hello, Donna Steele again. How will I receive answers to my questions?
We'll talk to you after the meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Secondly, I did want to say that we want to live in a place locally, statewide, and nationally where the voters pick the politicians. It's not the other way around. So I hope we're all working towards that common goal. Thank you.
Anyone in?
Yes, Neil. I'm Joseph McDaniel. Live in Florence, served in the U.S. Army, UA graduate. I have a small company. I have experienced both the demolition and construction since I was a child, so has my family. So I've grown up understanding what building structures are and the dangers or the improvements that can be made. And I've heard some comments that were shared by David over here about comments on Facebook being lifted. I understand my constitutional right and the ability to freely address agreements with our government. There might need to be an issue, you know, looked at there. That's not my primary reason for being up here today. I've loosely looked at the details really quickly of what is it going to cost to take this building down? What's the potential replacement of this building? And the research that I've done, I've also gotten sources from here, is the average that most places or face cities, counties, that parking decks of that structure typically have about a thirty-to-fifty-year lifespan before we start to see stuff like structural fractures, stress fractures, just wear and tear on the, you know, the facilities itself. That one being built in seventy-nine means that it's the same age as I am. And I think it is important that's been brought up by both David River and a few other people who happen to be, you know, awesome friends of mine. They are very passionate about what they do, so I believe what they bring to the table that I'm not certain of the politics, friendship, or whomever's intermixed in there, but I think it would be important to have somebody else come in, you know, just take a look and give their, you know, unattached opinion of what they think. You know, I happen to know a few people working in this industry. I subcontract in contract for other cities and a private research company as well. I'm employed as a diver for environment, but also see structures like bridges, rail, road improvement projects for both the federal, states, and city governments, many different entities. So their questions, I find, are, you know, of good concern and it's valiant that they bring those to the table and that we have, you know, some conversations about this later. I'm not certain of all the details, but discussion of City Hall, from what I understand my research, seems to lead me to that that building is seventy years old. And if that's equal in comparison to the state of our parking deck as we have as superseded that building age and everything, I think that a new City Hall would be great and attractive. Demolition of the parking deck, demolition of City Hall and/or it being revamped and being rebuilt somewhere is going to bring in additional temporary jobs, one, two, maybe more hundred labors providing for this community. Some of those people may actually move to this area. Companies like me are going to get a kickback for that. Guy down here, he's got a restaurant, he's like, "I don't have fifty customers coming in, I don't have to close my doors." Well, you may get that fifty customers. Florence is trying to grow. We're looking beautiful. I just saw the signs on that new parking deck down here. I think that some of our leaders and people in this community as well have great ideas, and I think that we continue on and take a look, and let's see if we get some people to look at both our new City Hall, what that looks like, and let's have somebody else come in and take a look at this parking deck project. I appreciate y'all's time and service.
Thank you. Anyone in the middle?
Everything is everything. I know you ought to understand that. Don't even try. Look, I listened to both plans, and Rivers sounded a whole lot better, and I believe he is a genius. I mean, he don't even get paid for it, but he come up here and got so much intelligence, and he makes a lot of us look bad. Thanksgiving over, the spirit gone. I mean, mostly, just a few of us holding on to the spirit. Christmas here, gone. Christmas spirit, gone. January, back to the old mindset. MAGA. Twenty twenty-five. Racism. Twenty twenty-five. From the rednecks. Twenty twenty-five. Some people just won't change. They just... They just put on a mask during Thanksgiving and Christmas like we really... We're really good Christians. But when January come, they pull the mask off, and they don't have... There's no evidence that they're Christians after that. That's bad. It's bad. But that's all right. Love will overcome. Love will overcome hate, racism, all these mindsets that the devil give different people different things. Love. Mr. Griffin, it all will come. People gonna come together one day, and they gonna look beyond color. They gonna look beyond what country you come from. And we gonna see each other as humans, not just religious people, denominational, but as Christ saw people as humans. And he gave all humans a right to manage in the right way. If you don't manage, you mismanage something, you lose it. Adam mismanaged, that's why he lost the kingdom. But the kingdom is available again. Those that really want to follow Christ, those that still want to treat people right. Eventually, we gonna win. And evil is gonna lose. Anything evil is, opposes what Jesus said. I believe some people need to get back to reading with the Holy Spirit, getting them to understand what love is. Because a lot of people, even if they didn't have it, they surely ain't got it now. But Mr. Griffin, I think for some of our white people in Alabama, because they look beyond color, where you come from, how much money you got in the bank. And they see the heart of a love that...
Yeah, one minute remaining.
To bring others that are hurting, homeless, up to a place where they can breathe easy. Too many people are living in the woods. That's bad. But we got a great city. Well, we great in some things, but you got to love people more than animals. I mean, we take care of animals. I don't have anything against animals, but hey, animals supposed to be in the woods, and the people need to be in the shelter. And y'all need to stop loving guns so much. Wow, nothing wrong with having guns. I'm a military veteran, but I don't need a gun. I got angels watching over me.
Your time is up. Put your guns up.
Anyone else in the middle?
Hello, I'm Chapel King, for those who aren't familiar with me. I'm here tonight, again, to thank you guys for everything that you've done over the years, building the new animal shelter, having the wonderful director, and your hard work with the county animal control. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you, we're here to fix the problem of all these animals and overpopulation. I have brought with me Frank Rinaldo. Frank, a few years ago, helped Huntsville start their spay and litter clinic. And so that's what our plan is here in Florence, that we're working on currently to do that. So I'll let him come up and explain that to you, but thank you, guys. We're hoping to get control of the... to get control of this population and help our community, help the local shelters, and not just for our city and county here, but for others as well. We're going around to all the cities and counties, um, here in, um, Culver County to present this and just let them know what we are planning on doing. So we hope to have your support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she already briefed you basically what, what we're doing here. My name is Frank Renaldo, um, and I'm here to formally announce the creation of a low-cost spay and neuter clinic here for the Scholes, uh, in the surrounding area. Uh, the organization is going to be called Scholes Spay and Neuter Coalition. Um, I've briefly talked with some of the members about this in the past, uh, and I opened up the opportunity to speak with anybody at any time about our intention here. Uh, we are a fledgling organization. Uh, we're still working through all of our paperwork and our legal paperwork, but, um, we did it once before. Um, we can add our resources to the four other clinics in Alabama and 130 some odd clinics that are modeled after the old Humane Alliance program, which is now under the ASPCA. So, um, I'm not going to take up any, anywhere near five minutes into doc, but, um, I'm going to leave some paperwork here, uh, contact information, and, uh, I just hope that, um, we have the support that we need to get this going and really do something about the overpopulation and the number of animals that are euthanized just because of the surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will have council members report, starting with Mr. Edwards.
Pretty only I have, I know we had a police officer that, oh, U. Police Officer yesterday that was injured in a car accident, uh, transferred to Huntsville Hospital and, uh, just wanted to, uh, say our prayers are with him and, and continue to be and, uh, hope, uh, everybody else be, pray for him and his family also, for Mr. Gell Park, who was also injured in an accident, not as seriously, but, uh, remember him and his family in prayers also. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you. You know, some of the greatest football coaches and quarterbacks in the world never coached football, never played football, because they didn't have the guts to do it. They would rather sit in their chair and critique people who do have the guts to do it. They'll convince you that they've got all the answers right from their recliner. They know where the quarterback should have thrown the ball, how he should have done it, how the play should have been called, all that. But they don't, they didn't have the guts to get out there and do it. So, you know, obviously, you guys have all the answers. I, I encourage you to run for office, but I don't think you will because I think you're more comfortable, you know, sitting right there and doing, doing what you do. LBYD is an engineering firm in Huntsville. If you know anything about Huntsville, they have some of the greatest engineers in the world. And on a recent phone call with the mayor, I think Mr. Hendricks was involved in that, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, don't hold me to this word for word, but they basically said, if you're stupid enough to give us your money, we'll try to fix that deck up. A few million dollars, you know, five million by now. If we'd have done it in 2018, we could have got 10 more years out of it, which were coming up on that 10, you know, 10-year mark, pretty close. Uh, but they, you know, they basically said, that's probably triple now of, of the two billion you could, you could have used. So, um, you know, I, I take their word for it, that that, that parking deck is in, in, in terrible shape. And, um, so, you know, I, I hope we get around before someone gets hurt. And I know you said, Mr. White, you walked through there, you didn't see anything. Uh, I appreciate you taking the time to do that, but you're not an engineer. And, uh, you know, I guess it's going to take a piece of concrete hitting you in the head or killing the child or whatever to convince you guys that, uh, that parking deck's beyond repair. So, um, and I respect my counterparts here for, for whatever their reasons are for, for not wanting to go forward with tearing that deck down, uh, right now. If they want to, you know, continue to do more due diligence, then, uh, they're, they're certainly welcome to do that. But I, again, uh, this is a very reputable engineering firm who, again, would, would just be giddy. And you insinuated that they're in cahoots some way or the other and, and making money off this. They could have made millions of dollars off of us, and they basically told us, you don't need to. You know, they were shocked that we were still even having that deck open. So, uh, enough of that. I, I'm about to sit, you know, warn myself out on this whole parking deck. Uh, but, uh, again, I echo your, your, your thoughts about, uh, Mr. Hines, Officer Hines yesterday in his accident. And, uh, prayers for him and his family as he, uh, goes through a difficult recovery. That's all I have.
Mr. Hendricks?
I also, uh, want to wish Officer Hines a speedy recovery. I did check on, uh, Dr. Carl Gell Park last night. He's a pastor that married my wife and I, and he was treated and released. So, uh, very good news. I'm sure he's very sore today. Um, but, uh, he, he's doing fine. Also, uh, want to give a shout out to the electricity department. We had an outage in the neighborhood. When those winds came through, we had over 400 homes out. Um, I called dispatch to find out what was going on so I could post something to our neighborhood crew. And obviously, a crew had already been dispatched, was working on it, and I think within about an hour, all of our power had been restored while we were all comfortable in our homes, uh, under candlelight, which was, you know, nice. You know, we had people in bucket trucks in the rain restoring our power forces. Sometimes we forget that. And so I want to thank those individuals that went out and, and did that on behalf of my neighborhood. I also need to thank engineering, the street department, uh, and Frank Chaney and, and the mayor's office for helping me on an issue of getting, um, a couple more handicap spots, uh, on Mobile Street. And they've, uh, done a really good job expediting that, and I certainly appreciate that. Um, Chapel, Frank, I want to thank y'all for what you're doing. Um, if we're able to get that under, under control, um, that would be wonderful. You know, we're working to do something similar. We're almost complete at the animal shelter to lower our numbers as well. Um, and so I think working together, you know, we can solve this problem together. It's, it's, my wife and I are very passionate about animals. Being a childless couple, our, our animals are all rescues and they're all our babies. So I really appreciate the efforts you're going through to do that. Um, beyond that, I just want to wish, uh, everyone, uh, a very happy and prosperous 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, ma'am. If you need to talk to me, call 335-6575. I'm available to talk to any time. Uh, our prayers are with Officer Hines. It's, it just, I know about that. Um, I just hope that everyone will be safe if we have snow. Someone's already challenged me to come down to the nursing home and slide down the hill. That won't happen, but, um, be safe and have fun. I think our city's going to do everything they can to open it up back as quick as possible. Ma'am, thank you for coming. If you have questions, yes.
Oh, I just, I just had one question.
You can't, you can't, we can't have that long.
I'm just saying thank you for coming and addressing us, and somebody will get with you afterwards.
Right.
Mr. Griffin?
Hey, thanks, President Simmons. Um, I, I do want to address a comment that Mr. White made about Hull, uh, because it's helpful to have some of the background that you may not be privy to. Um, we've met with them many times when they bother to come to Florence, which is not very often. They get on their little private jet from their little home in Augusta, Georgia, and they come over and they tell us that we need to add more taxes to the mall property so that they can have that extra money and, and have more stores. That's the only way, they say, that we're going to be able to get more retail there. So that leaves us in a position where we don't want to sit at a table with them and that we don't have any negotiating power because that facility is not for sale. What a lot of people also don't know is that it makes plenty of money for Hull, and if it did not, it would be for sale. They get money from the rental agreements that they have. Dillard's owns its own facility, by the way. Um, all the others are rental properties. And then they also lease the property in the out parcels. So they're tearing down. If Sears and JCPenney will only allow them to have more money. Further, they get tax revenues as a tax shelter from the federal government. So they make plenty of money on the city of Florence and that piece of property, and they have no, they have no desire to come to the table and sell. And there's nothing that I can do about it. It's a private business, and they are, they are what they are. They also own properties in Decatur and Opelika and Columbia, Tennessee, and Hendersonville, North Carolina, and quite a bit of other places in the southeast. What they don't own is anything in Huntsville. So what you saw there is some good work on behalf of ownership who was willing to come to the table and redevelop that had nothing to do with the municipality. So good for them. I wish we had something like that that was willing to come to the table and have people who were willing to come to the table and do it. What we don't have is a willing participant at Hull. So, um, thank you for allowing me to chat with you about that. Happy to do some more. Um, I'll go on record stating that I am not a fan. Um, so, uh, you know, we talked about Officer Hines, and it's terrible. I hated to get that email yesterday. And Officer Mesa, I hope you have or can give us some sort of an update, if you know one, after we're finished tonight. But our EMA director, Brad Holmes, is not with us because he has suffered a personal loss. And then several of us has mentioned, have mentioned the weather, but I have to say, I have to point out the good work that has been done since our last very severe weather event. Rachel Coons is sitting back there. She's worked very hard along with our engineering department to create the map of what roads are city, county, and state, and that will be available on social media, which will be very helpful to know what we in the city of Florence can do about. Um, we've also got the addition of, uh, trucks and other equipment on the trucks, millions of pounds of salt and calcium chloride, thanks to the good work going on of David Coons and the street department. We're as ready as we can be because we had an opportunity after the last January storms to react and respond appropriately. And I am delighted to have worked on behalf of the Public Works Committee and public safety to get that done. It's amazing. That is government in action. That is politics being local and making a difference in the lives of people and their safety and their health and their ability to function in their worlds. And I'm deeply thankful and grateful for that opportunity. And Rachel, you're the only one here, so I'm looking at you to thank you for all you did to make sure that we're communicating this properly. Um, weather has obviously been a big topic in North Alabama, and I want to also extend our, our condolences to the folks in Athens who suffered some fairly substantial losses recently as a result of the severe weather there. Um, that could have just as easily been us here in Florence, and I'm very grateful it wasn't, but I am very sorry that it happened to anyone that we know. So, um, with that, I hope you all had a wonderful holiday season and a lovely new year, and I thank you all for your attendance and your voices today.
Thank you. I just want to echo, uh, Ms. Eubanks about the weather, everybody being weather safe. We want to certainly say thank you, again, to Ms. Coons and to the entire street department. Um, they're already set on ready. Mr. Coons was here earlier and he told us they're already prepared to roll out, um, Friday morning, or Thursday night, it may be. So they are on ready. So everybody, if it happens, please stay in, stay off the roads, highways, if, um, you're instructed to do so. The redistricting, we will, um, guess reevaluate that and take a, a deeper look at that. And, um, yes, I am concerned, and it has nothing to do with the race card. Also, I want to say, uh, want to echo that my thoughts and prayers filled out to Mr. Officer Hines and to the doctor. We pray that they're speedy recovery and healing upon the both of them. Also, too, want to say thank you to our electricians. I, too, was in the dark. I guess we're on the same transformer. We don't live far from each other, so, um, with my candlelight. So I want to say thank them because the weather was, was awful during that time that, um, those transformers were, we were out. In the dark, and then my house started getting cold on me, so anyway, I just want to say thank them so much, and I do appreciate, um, their hard work and their sacrifice. And, um, just want to say happy new year to everybody, and I pray that we have a blessed and a prosperous, uh, 2025, and this city can come together, merge together, as well as my colleagues, for the greater, for the city of Florence. With that being said, I'm going to ask Martha London, if you would come and give us a distress signal, please.
Martha, you want me to do this?
Martha, please.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you so much for your goodness and your kindness towards us. We thank you for your son, Jesus. And Jesus, we thank you for your birth. We thank you for your life. We thank you for your death, and we thank you for your resurrection and ascension. And Lord, we do thank you for pouring out your spirit on all flesh, and that spirit that brings, not a spirit of timidity or cowardice, but you have given us a spirit of love, of power, and of sound mind. And I pray, Holy Spirit, that you will unify this city, that we will come to one mind in you and under the banner of Jesus the Christ, for you are coming back. And we praise you and we glorify you for giving us the opportunity to step into an everlasting kingdom through you, Christ Jesus. We ask that you would bless the city council members. We thank you for them. We are grateful for their leadership, and we ask that you would encourage them this very night in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you very much.